...with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Our next meeting date, May fifteenth, which is be the third Wednesday of the month, correct?
Yes.
So that, that is confirmed with everyone. Moving on to number four. We do discuss an app form A application for twenty-three, twenty-five Chestnut Street. Now, lot forty-eight and one-twenty-three. If you recall our last meeting, the numbers appeared, did not appear to be off. They were off from the, his description in the lower left-hand corner and what was appearing on the, on the map here. Now, this is supposed to be the new one, but as I see it, it's still wrong.
Still wrong.
Now, if you read the definition carefully, of the square footage of, lot one-two-three and lot forty-eight, there is a thousand square foot swap from one property to the other. So those numbers should remain the same, the square footage. Now, if you read the description, it once again does not match the square footage in lot one-twenty-three and lot forty-eight. It could be way off on this one, but I think it's still wrong.
No, it, it looks right to me. It looks like you're right. It's a simple swap of a thousand-foot parcels.
The.
Joey, you're looking at the wrong one. It's a good one there. It's actually, I think, it's actually the same as the plan that was submitted.
It's exactly similar to the original.
The original plan reflected parcel be having forty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven square feet. So it can correct this much here.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
And just so you know, I received a phone call probably about five minutes ago from the engineer stating that he was running a little bit late. So if you have concerns or if you want clarification, he'll be here. So he just asked that you table it until he appears.
Okay, we can do that.
I'll make a motion to table this.
Second. Motion made to table until the engineer gets here, all favor.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Moving on to item four B. Continue the public hearing, residential subdivision for Canada Roo Joe.
Uh, can we wait for Bob Barbe?
Are you waiting for Bob Barbe?
Okay.
I'm gonna get motion to table.
Till the engineer gets here, okay. He gets us out of my way. Motion made, second to table pending appearance by the engineer. All favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Moving on to item four C.
Mr. Chairman, it is time I am going to have to recuse myself from this hearing due to my decision on the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Thank you. The public hearing is in regards to the residential subdivision for Stephen and Carrie Jones, seven-twenty-one Middle Street, map nine, lot seventy-five. I'm thinking their engineer said.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Rachel Smith from Otis Dyer's office, representing Stephen and Carrie Jones. So I believe the way we left it at the last meeting that you were waiting for an opinion from town council?
Yes, correct.
If we see.
And we did send you an opinion letter from council on that.
I got an email, yep, I got an email that said town council felt that the zoning board of appeals decision did not complete two lots. Is that correct?
That's what the email says, that's correct.
Okay, so, um.
And that the, more specifically, if I could just for more clarity, I, I think the gist of the, the email opinion was that there are provisions and there are subdivision rules and regs that require conformity with your zoning bylaw. And that the written decision from the zoning board granting the variance benefited one parcel and, and not the other. And that was the gist of the opinion, that it would have to create variances, you know, for both, it didn't. So while one had the benefit of it, the other one didn't. And I think one provision was cited in that opinion, but that was twenty-two thirteen, but there's another as well. So the one in twenty-two thirteen talks about procedural aspects for the board, but there's a more substantive provision later on talking about performance standards, and that's forty-one-twenty. And it says, "All lots shown on the plan shall conform to the requirements for area dimensions, frontage, buildable area, and all other requirements of the zoning bylaw," period. So that one's even more stringent than the first one. So that, that was the sum and substance of the opinion that you received from my colleague, Jay Talley.
Okay, so the question I had, because reading this, the decision, variance, notice of decision, it states, "A variance to subdivide property into two lots, leaving existing single-family dwelling on one lot and create a second lot that gives access to the rear property currently used for farming with reduced frontage." So the way I read it, it really sounds as though the ZVA is giving a variance to create two lots and saying that the second lot has reduced frontage.
Well, I read that decision also again today. If you look on page three, last paragraph. "Having taken all of the information into consideration and having made your both findings a fact, the board hereby grants the requested variances," plural. So, I don't know where we are with this at this point.
Can I read another provision?
Sure, absolutely.
And I'll admit, there's, there's a bit of ambiguity here. It's, you have to read it a few times. And one of the things for, for your benefit, I'll mention, is that I've asked for the full file on the ZVA's proceedings. I just asked for a little, what, five minutes ago, so it's not fair that I don't have it yet for you. But in order to connect the dots and see if these ambiguities can be resolved, but on the first page, under the paragraph labeled background, it says, "The petitioner is seeking a variance," so this is sort of halfway down the, the black paragraph there at the top. "The petitioner is seeking a variance from a lot frontage requirement from the Town of Dayton zoning bylaw. It cites the provision, 'As the resulting lot on which existing single-family dwelling is located will have less than the required hundred-and-seventy-five feet of frontage and less than the required hundred-and-fifty feet for a business use of frontage.'" "The petitioner also seeks a variance from the provisions of," and it cites another section, twenty-six-ten, "of zoning bylaw requirements prohibiting changing a lot size or shape except in conformity with the zoning bylaw. As the resulting lot on which the single-family home is located will be even more non-conforming with regards to lot frontage." So in that sentence, you're talking about two variances in one lot. So that's the ambiguity. It's not clear. When you read the decision, you know, the rest of it, the pages that follow, it becomes a little less clear. But when you talk about what the application was and what relief was before the board, that's where it's set forth pretty plainly. So I, I think maybe seeing the application itself will shed some light on that. If there was a plan associated with it, et cetera, there may be some more facts that, you know, would educate us on that. But I think that's the sentence where it's stated kind of most plainly.
Yeah, that, that is just in the background, though. I mean, they go on further to talk about creating, you know, on page two, where the petitioner advised the board that he and his wife were looking to subdivide the subject parcel to create two lots. One with the one-twenty-four ninety-seven and the other with forty feet to be used to access the rear. And that is talked about several times. So, I mean, is the background carry more weight than the actual notice of decision?
You have to read it in its totality, and what's the relief the board intended to grant under the circumstances? And I, I can't, I wasn't there, I wasn't part of it, I didn't vote. So I, I can't, you know, know any more into the mental processes than, than you all do right now. So I think what, uh, what we're referring to here is, you know, a clear statement that it was talking about two variances for one lot. And it appears that that's all that was applied for. So, and I'm not saying that this is a final word on the subject, because I don't have everything before me. But if that's all that was applied for, then that's all the board could grant. So we need to answer that question. It appears that there's a missing piece.
May I ask you a few questions?
Sure.
In regard to this, 'cause as we discussed last time, we weren't able to put a retreat lot in the back because of the business owner.
Right.
And we're, we're clear on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, that being said, and, and you, you talked about using the rear for agriculture that he owns.
Yes.
Do you really need a forty-foot road going back there?
I think it's mostly because the existing path is not perfectly straight. At one point, it has to go around some ledge in order to get to the back. I'm certain in parts of it, you wouldn't need forty.
No, well, I think the front half, the front half, about fifty feet off is all ledge. There's a lot of rock. And then you go down, and then there's another spot that's got a lot of rock. Them two spots, I need the forty feet. But further down, I don't need the forty feet.
The, the path's not perfectly straight, so in some places, it doesn't really hug the boundary line due to either the rock. And I think there may be one point where it crosses a brook, where it also angles out a bit.
Now, there's a hundred-and-sixty-four feet. The one lot is there, because it's in a business district, only requires a hundred-and-fifty feet frontage.
Yes.
And if you can read through the lines here, what I'm alluding to. If you wanted to access the back and not have a non-conforming lot, you need to leave a hundred-and-fifty feet of frontage. And the frontage for the road, the farm road, will be what it is. I don't want to give too much advice here. And as long as you have the proper frontage, you can go around them ledges and make it wider. But it's gonna have to be on a plan. Now, along with that, and that way there, you could access it for the agricultural use, if that's your intent. If you ever had any thoughts of solar, twenty feet only is required to access the back. So, you know, if you submitted another plan with an A and R, we just, and withdrew this. And again, we're not gonna settle this tonight, so you can talk about it.
Right, right.
Speaking for myself, I would not approve a plan as it exists. Because we're already cutting into, it's a, it was a conforming law, you made it non-conforming by taking away that. Now, you know you can't have forty feet for a retreat lot.
Right, they understand that. They're just concerned about their access.
So, I think I've kind of put out to you, but, I mean, it's up to the board. If we want, if you want to vote it tonight, that's fine, as it stands, but.
But at the moment, you're implying or suggesting that likely the vote would go against it. But we really need more information from town council as far as the variance.
So I, I don't know, if you want to discuss it with your clients and... 'Cause we're probably gonna continue this until everybody has more information. Anybody have anything else to add?
Oh, I think you hit it on the head.
Did you? I think I saw in the paperwork some references to other obstacles for this being a retreat lot in any event, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we should continue to, uh, next meeting till everybody has more information and I.
I don't agree with the forty feet at all.
No? Oh, okay, so you kind of did a summary.
Yeah.
I assume that's all. That's smart of you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think we're gonna just continue it for now. They need to talk this over.
Okay, that's good. The motion to continue this, do I?
Yes, I'll make a motion to continue to our next meeting, which would be Wednesday, May sixteenth. Fifteenth, I'm sorry.
Motion's made and seconded to continue to May sixteenth. All's a favor.
Fifteenth, May fifteenth.
May fifteenth.
Aye. My bad.
Okay, thanks. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to continue passes. Any other engineers here that's supposed to be here? Okay, Bristol County Agricultural School here.
We are.
Okay, you guys are up. I don't know how, if we had a plan on how to continue this.
William will lead the way.
If I may suggest, and perhaps
Sure.
another board member may have a different thought on the process. But how about if we go through it page by page? And any questions, concerns, or comments can be raised after each page?
That work?
Does that work?
Yeah. All right.
Well, I guess he's gonna have to wait.
So, okay, 'cause we, we didn't bring every page, so we'll just bring them up and.
Yeah, that's fine. And explain it if we have a question. Is anybody also here, interested party in the agricultural school?
I am John Mitchell from the.
Okay.
Ryan Brandon from.
You're all with the school, all.
Well, Gil Bane, Calia, our OPM contractor, Ryan's with the school.
Okay, Noah Waters, that may have questions.
No, no.
Bobby Williams, HMFH Architects. So, there are seventy-five pages.
Yeah, that's all?
Some of them.
I just wanna, someone wish to be very quick. Can I just, can I just look at the cover sheet?
Snack.
I don't know why so many. It's only a hundred-three million dollar project.
So, without putting the first ones up, the first ones are just all existing survey drawings, there are seven of them. You want to go through each, it's just showing the existing survey of the existing conditions.
No, I don't think so, because we're going through Stormwater Committee on that one and,
Yeah.
you know, so unless Peter wants to see.
I'll be reviewing it by now, but I've, I've already looked at the plans.
Okay.
So then the next one would be civil drawings.
If anybody else has got another thought on how to proceed, that'd be okay too?
You might ask if they had a prepared presentation.
What's that?
You might ask them if they had a prepared presentation.
Oh, okay. Do you have a, did you have a presentation?
Um, you know, we, a couple of weeks ago, we came and we did the overview presentation. So I was, if you wanted, I could give you the quick overview again, which is just the colored site plan rendering of the project.
Oh, yeah, that'd probably work.
We can do the, the quick version of that, so we can get to the, the meat of it.
Okay.
Uh, but anyway, that, that wasn't here. So this is the Bristol County Agricultural High School, Center Street divides right through the campus, the north campus. Uh, we're proposing three new buildings, the Center for Science and Environment, which will house the animal, uh, using my train of thought here. The Natural Resource Manager Program, the lower floor, the new science classrooms, a brand-new environmental technology program on the upper floor. And then the three floors over here will be all animal science. This will be a new dairy barn, it'll be a robotic dairy barn. The student comments building will house the cafeteria as well as the media. Keith Hall will remain as-is, it won't be touched as part of the project. Um, the south campus, we're renovating the existing Gilbert Hall to be mostly academic classrooms. The gym will remain. Um, the Arbor Program will have classrooms inside as well as a climbing lab. The AdMech Building will be fully renovated, stay AdMech mechanics. Fore culture building will not be touched. And the Arbor Landscape Lab, the existing pole barn will be demolished and will combine, create a new pole barn essentially, which for the landscape kids, as well as an Arbor Garage for the bucket truck storage. That will be combined into one building. The center of the campus will be an accessible route all the way from the dairy barn to Arbor Landscape. There'll be a new addition onto Gilbert Hall that will provide vertical circulation, an elevator and stairs where the kids, the main entry point for the kids. This will all be pedestrian-friendly, meaning the current vehicular traffic will be pushed to the periphery for safety. So there'll be a bus loop and a drop-off loop on both sides of the campus to the outside. So that's one of the main changes. We've worked with the fire department about access in terms of safety-wise to get in there and talk to the police department as well. So we have been in discussion with there. There is a, a fire loop around the backside. It'll also be used for, if it's a one-way loop in and it's only for service vehicles or the fire access around the new building here. We are taking the crosswalk and proposing to move it further up to the east on Center Street. In addition to that, we had a parking survey, a parking study completed that reviewed that traffic all the way back to Center Street and made some proposals in terms of some radar safety speed checks that would be added. Uh, I, I think it was approximately three hundred feet prior to this and three hundred feet prior to that. These will be solar-powered and they will display flashing lights as well as the speed of the traffic to help slow people down. And then we're currently looking about how to stripe that and working on different ways to stripe that to, it'll either be a very bright color, but something that will really stand out in the street. So that's kind of a, a quick run-through, just to kind of get it going. Is there any questions on the project for that matter?
No, but I, do we receive any comments yet from anybody?
I did receive a email, and I have it here for you, from the fire chief.
Oh, that's the only one there.
That was P.O. I got that as I came in this evening. He just asked if the crosswalk light could have a traffic control sensor, opticon added.
Okay.
So you can certainly take that into your.
Consideration. Sure, we can have an answer on that probably within the next, a bit.
And then we also had from the sewer commissioner, just saying that their, their engineer is currently working with you guys.
Correct.
We're working with the consultants for the collision.
Right. And then Charlie Mello from Conservation, went through the proposal and it appears that all of the proposed construction is beyond their jurisdiction. All the construction is in upland, seems to be out of the FEMA plus zone, Stormwater is a planning board responsibility or Stormwater Committee. So that's pretty much, he did want to make note that the comments were from one of the, from the Conservation Commission, one of the members. They're not meeting until May eighth, where they'll have a more thorough, but off the top of what he had. And I'll certainly forward these to you.
Okay, for sure. Yeah, we didn't anticipate any, any insurance and comment as well.
What was your timeline again?
We're looking for mid-June. We're submitting our, our early site package out. So the contractor's gonna put an early site package out to bid for some mobilization to take advantage of the summer when the kids are off-campus, to put up safety fencing, do some maybe minor demo of the crane house. If it's not, we're also toxin moving the whole property off-site. So it'd be more of a mobilization package. And I think the building permit we're looking is about August one, I think is when they're looking to get a building permit by. We've been talking with Jim, how you are about.
Peter, have you any, two early requirements, right?
Well, I have reviewed the project and I do have some, you know, questions, maybe we could address, you know, offline because.
Sure.
Um, I, I'd like to double-check those before I finalize on that. But just a quick question on what you, you've done on the overall layout. So that the traffic signal that's there, that, that's gonna be moved up?
Correct.
Yes, moved up. And that's activated by the students to for us?
Correct.
Okay, and so the fire chief just wants one of those that'll turn, make sure it's green when they need to come through.
Yeah.
Okay, and on the north side, the farthest west entrance, no, uh, west, I think.
West.
Yeah, oh, or east-southwest, right.
Yeah, that's just gonna be for truck and deliveries access. Because that's getting very close to the crest of the hill.
Correct, and it's a, it's only a left turn. It's a one-way this way, so there's no, no, because it is a difficult hill here with the obstruction of the,
Right.
of the, of the stone walls.
Stone walls.
This would just be entrance-only and emergency slash delivery.
And where are they coming out?
And then they drive up and out here. This is.
Out the bus loop?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And have you done any just, you know, site distance analyses or anything for the entrances?
In terms of.
Stopping site and, you know, site distance.
I believe you've run some turning radiuses.
We did, those radiuses, but the, the side distance, no, but I, I mean, when you look on the street on both sides, it's pretty long. I would say that it's more than three to four hundred feet the side distance. But I would like, I would have to double-check this one.
Okay. And I guess the other question would be, how are you gonna enforce that left turn only at that location?
Left turn only and not come out here.
Well, coming from the right or?
Well, it could be a right.
It's just an entrance, okay, it's not just a left turn or entrance.
Entrance only, sorry. Sorry, I, I misspoke. It's a left turn or a right turn.
Entrance, so you have the pro, it's the way and.
Oh, that's correct.
Okay.
And the lease sign there stating service vehicles only, emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
Are you asking for any waivers at all?
Um, I don't.
Yes, we ask for minor ones in regards to the size of the plans, scale. And also there is requirement to show all the property lines, but the site is really big. So we ask just to show in vicinity of the project, new buildings. Because we're looking like two hundred acres or two hundred by. I think those are all.
Yeah, that's probably all that.
It is, and there.
And the size of the paper, you can see, you know, trying to ref.
And the scale of the plan, I think. Excuse me? The scale of the plan.
The scale of the plan instead of twenty is thirty.
Yeah.
And we also ask for a thirty-by-forty-two size of the plans, because otherwise, like, we have an existing condition in scale twenty. Even if this is a thirty-by-forty-two, we have a seven plans. But if we have, for design, plans, we're gonna have only two for each of the type of the plan. So two for utilities, two for grading and so on.
Yeah. To the board, you, you'll eventually get, you know, PDFs of the plans and everything, and that probably for a project like this should be suitable for your record-keeping. So I don't see any problems with the waivers that they were requesting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, when school is in session, I'm just concerned about delivery times and trucks. Basically, anticipating an August first start date, construction, correct? Is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay. It's not, it's, it's bad enough when school is not in session, traffic-wise. But then it even gets worse when school is in session. Have you a schedule for deliveries set up?
Um, we brought Dave DeForrester, Gil Bane, who's the construction manager. So he'll be able to speak a little bit more to how they're gonna manage the construction.
So because of the early traffic, like seven forty-five to eight fifteen, we would limit the, our truck traffic to after that early traffic. Or we would, we would like restrict the hours between, I think it's seven forty-five, and I'd go through this with Ryan exactly, when we put the bid packages out. So from seven forty-five, I think, to eight-thirty, you know, we would.
I think more like seven o'clock, to be honest with you.
Seven, seven.
What do you guys think? It gets pretty hefty about seven.
What time is the kitchen staff?
Yeah, seven, seven fifteen.
Yeah, what time is kitchen staff starting with that? Seven AM? Kitchen staff are on, available on-site for deliveries, that type of thing? Because you're gonna have deliveries going in there, I mean, if they're before school.
So my, my staff is, during the school year is at eight o'clock, they start, and seven o'clock during the summer times. So the traffic studies that we, that HMFH had done indicated, I mean, seven-thirty would, would be fair. Seven o'clock is still pretty quiet.
I wouldn't say that, because I travel all the time, honestly. And my question in regards to a little bit of this was that, has anyone contacted the state of Mass DOT to see if they're gonna change the time on traffic light on one-thirty-eight and Center Street? Because that road gets backed up at seven AM in the morning, because I travel it quite a bit, even though I'm, you know, retired. It's six-thirty in the morning, I'm out, and traffic is, you'd be surprised, backs, both sides of one-thirty-eight are backed up. And then at that time, you're also having students being dropped off at the middle school, which creates a, a traffic backup there also, so. And then at that time, you're also having students being dropped off at the middle school, which creates a, a traffic backup there also, so.
So we, we haven't contacted them yet, but we certainly will.
That would alleviate some of that traffic issue there, I would think.
You know, we observe, what we do is observe the, the, the traffic early in the morning, and with, with Ryan, kind of determine what those hours should be. So we know, and, and even the middle school up the road.
When was the last time the state had done a traffic study in front of the schools just to find out how many vehicles are traveling back and forth?
So we have a traffic study that we did as part of this project, and I can submit that to the board if you guys would like for the next submission, because that wasn't part of this mission, but we'll, we'll follow up with that um after this.
I think we still have the lines across our street, because I was driving uh, uh, to the meeting, and they have a line across to uh count the traffic.
So it might be continued, still.
It was still might be continued.
Okay, so we can double check, and I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but we do have a traffic study, um, that we could, we can help provide that information.
So we'll, we'll make sure to incorporate that into, into the bidding documents that we send out for bid. So all, all contractors know what the requirements are in that respect.
Same thing at the end of the day too, once it was out.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Is there any way that, um, to alleviate some of the traffic when the buses leaving in the afternoon? How would you be able to, um, because I see sometimes that some people are nice to let five or six buses go at a time, and then the, you know, traffic will flow in either direction. To have someone posted from the school to say, to be out there at that time, just that buses just can flow, traffic stops, buses flow, and, you know, whether it be over the Berthley Bridge in that direction, um, or heading uh west on Center Street.
Almost like a traffic guard?
Yeah, that type of thing, because, you know, that'll leave you with, um, your safety issue, is the main thing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring that back to the board and talk to you about that. Sure.
I think as we move forward with this, once we get more comments from everyone that can be addressed, yeah, as, as far as the plan goes, it's gonna be a fantastic project, uh, no question, and I think you've already met with uh, most of the boards or committees that need to.
Correct.
And they're just working, I know Todd and Board of Health is.
Yep.
Working on his reviews now.
Correct.
And I'm sure Peter's gonna have a few more comments, so, um. I wonder if we should continue until such time we get all the comments in? I think we have sixty days, is that too far out there for your timeline?
Sixty days would be stretching it for us.
Okay.
Um, because I think June fifteenth is kind of our, that mid, um, planning board would be kind of our, the last date in, in terms of when we would look for approval. So if, if possible, if we could, you know.
Is two weeks good for you or?
Yes, I, I, I mean, I already started, I know this is a.
Okay, why don't we continue for two weeks?
Two weeks and see.
And we'll get on everybody for their comments and.
Sure.
You know.
Should we expect to do a page turn like that? Uh, it'd be helpful just for our planning.
That depends on Peter.
How to present.
That's, no, I don't need a page turner.
No, I don't think we.
A good reading book is good, but not.
Well, I, I do have, um, other consultants here. Is there any other, like, landscape questions, anything that we could offer ahead? That you might have any questions about plantings or any type of?
Maybe you can provide the board some information on your plantings now.
Doesn't need to.
Would that be, would, is the board interested?
If the board's interested, sure.
See, why not? Might as well be out there.
Yeah.
Um, can I clarify one question? Um, can the enabling package that we're talking about, would that be able to start before full approval of the planning board? What do you mean by start? Um, would putting up site construction fences and doing some mobilization that Gil Bain would need to do, um, starting in, you know, probably July, or you think in July one?
July, yeah, in July.
Should, should, um, you know, a further continuance or something happen, is there?
I don't think this would be done June.
Okay, so it, that was just a, just a question, right?
Yeah, I, I'd have no, no issues, you know, with them stuff.
No, it's, uh.
And I don't know.
So far, it's been pretty. Yeah, yeah.
Huh?
Yes, so far, it's been.
The longest safety precautions are taken.
Exactly.
Yeah, you don't have any buddies that you're dealing with with the project per se, so I wouldn't have probably kind of put in the question at all.
All right, we appreciate that. All right, so Vesna from Halverson will, will kind of walk you through a little bit of the planting if you.
Okay.
Oh, may I ask one question?
Sure.
If, I'll provide a comment letter to the planning board, and who should I copy on the design team?
I'll be copying myself, uh, Arby, it was at introdesh.com, I think we.
Yes.
Emailed so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the concept for the planting is, we actually had, um, we were very mindful that this is an agricultural school. It has a very active agriculture and horticulture pro- program. Uh, so we had, uh, we have been working with the school, um, from the get-go to come up with some ideas. Uh, one of the ideas is arboritum on campus, so, um, taking stock of what they have for trees, because all the trees on campus are, um, also educational. Uh, now, construction project of this scale is bound to have some of the existing trees removed. So, uh, we are actually going to use some of the tree removals as an educational opportunity for the students. Um, and we are actually meeting with them next week to figure out, you know, game plan, what can be removed, what can be transplanted, and, and so forth. Uh, also in coming up with the plant list, uh, there is a curriculum list that the school uses to teach uh, different types of plant materials. We're not going to be able to plant every single tree on that list. Of course, that list has hundreds and plus trees, but we are trying to cover at least a big core with the understanding that the school will continue every year to add on to the collection, ten, twenty trees. So, uh, our plans are actually showing that there is a distinction between trees that we are gonna plant as part of this project, and those are shown with the, the darkest. Uh, you can see that most of them are, are located in the core. Then we have a category of trees that are smaller in caliber, but we are still trying to include them as part of this project, which are going to be at the parking lots, just to sort of create the framework for the school. And then there is a number of trees that are, we're expecting the students to plant over the next five to seven years. Uh, that will create, so the plan that we are showing is really more organized, the plan for, for tree, um, tree planting. Uh, another aspect is how to treat the ground. Uh, we wanna stay away, or, you know, minimize the num- the square footage of conventional lawn, which needs irrigation and mowing. And, um, again, we are trying to provide areas that have that in the core, where you're gonna have commencements, you're gonna have the most, um, movements of students, that will still be irrigated lawn, but for the irrigation, we are collecting the water from this building in an underground tank, and the tank is sized to, um, just irrigate that area. And also to meet lead requirements, which is what the Green Building Council recommendations, that this building is trying to achieve, um, a certain rating. Outside of the central core, we are thinking more of meadow, different types of meadow grasses, that don't require so much mowing, and it's more naturalistic look, which will be also appropriate for the agricultural school.
So, I'm sorry, you, so you mean more like a fescue type grass that they have on the golf course, that type of thing?
Some areas might have more fescue-like, but we also thinking some areas can have the longer time that are actually get taller. Certainly areas that are not so much part of the everyday traffic, like here, you have sloped areas where you can do something more like, it has wildflower, it has legumes in it that help contribute the nutrients so that it doesn't require additional fertilizer input. So then.
You can always put goats there.
Yes, so that.
They will too, they will.
Can I ask one quick question? In, in that, on that plan, the area between the two buildings, there's these, these lines there. They're kind of like at an, yeah, those lines, what are those representing?
So this area is meant to be the central area for commencements. So there is, the school had asked for a number of people to be accommodated. Now, there is a Fifth Plaza, but these are also almost like amphitheater, but it's very subtle there. They're really just like curbs, um, so people can sit on the edges, but there are also terraces where conventional chairs can be placed during commencement.
Okay.
But it's also meant that the students throughout the year can use it as an outdoor classroom.
Yeah, just, that's a good idea, an outdoor classroom.
So it, it, it will step up, it takes advantage of the difference in grade between this and this building. This is a significant, you know, change of grade throughout the campus.
I love that idea.
Yeah.
So.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
You actually, how is, I know, you, you said the school is very accessible from north to south, but how is the accessibility handled from east to west, you know, up and down the slope?
So, uh, this particular diagonal that you see that continues in the south campus, it's all accessible. The place that, uh, may not be entirely accessible is when you cross, because you cannot change the slope of the road.
Right, right.
That road slopes more than, you know, the cross slope is more than two percent in that area, I think it's four and a half to five. Um, but all, all the circulation that you see is fully accessible.
So basically, the students are getting out to all the buildings from that central core, which is within ADA guidelines on the cross slope?
That, that's right, so, so here, there is always a different way to get, even here where we have the steps going around, there isn't accessible, there is a possibility to get, get around. It may not be the most direct route, but it, but it's still. Um, and then also the buildings, for example, this building, the, the address will have a ramp, um, ADA ramp that comes down. And then this, this part here is more level, so there are not really a lot of challenges in, in this way. Uh, in the south campus, the existing. I think again, I'm gonna mention that, so the dark trees are what we are planting, uh, as part of this contract, and, and the, the, the smaller ones as well. Again, trees here are trying to create that main spine. Also, it's important to have something there for aesthetic reasons, because Gilbert is tall. Um, and then, um, floor culture is small, very short and sparse, so between the two, we think it's, it's nice to have some sort of shade and vertical element, uh, that carries you throughout the campus. All the parking lots, we're also featuring vegetated swales that I think Alicia can talk about. Uh, they treat the road runoff, so it's, um, it has time to settle in a swale, and that will be also planted with meadow mix and, um, planting that can withstand dry and wet conditions. Oh, and also want to mention, there is a number of old, very valuable trees on campus, specimen trees that we are preserving, so those are also very important, especially in the south campus.
Well, that is, I'm good. Me too, man.
All right, here we go. All right, well, thank you for your time, we appreciate it. And, uh, we'll be back, so in two weeks, is that two, two weeks?
Yes, correct.
Excellent.
Chairman, I make a motion, we, uh, continue the hearing for the University County Air Sports High School site plan until, uh, maybe.
No second.
Motion made in second favor.
Aye, aye.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you.
I believe we've got our people for their comments.
How are you, Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, that'd be great.
Good seeing you, Jim. Good night. One night tonight?
I don't think so, if you get engineers here, we should play.
Wonderful.
Is it?
Is, uh, is the guy there here or is engineer?
No.
Not yet.
And move on to four B again. Help the hearing continue, Dan Trujillo, is there a willing to? I'm gonna read a couple of things into the record. It may have an impact on, what are you the one you represent? Uh, this is from the butter. Dear Mrs. Easterday, as in the butter, I am writing you to voice my opposition to the proposed subdivision at zero Wellington Street. Schedule for hearing, one five one twenty nineteen. Unfortunately, due to work-related travel, I am unable to attend this meeting in person. Concerns I have are failure of the existing plan to comply with Town of Dyton rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land, section forty-one eleven and forty-one twenty at a minimum. There are also significant concerns with the plan's failure to comply with current zoning bylaw, lot size and street fundage requirements. Conservation bylaws based upon its direct proximity to the headwaters of the Coles River, governed by the Army Corps of Engineers, important to the public water supply provided by the Dyton Water District. Impact the vegetated wetlands, wildlife habitat, and general pools. I ask the board to deny the applicant's request for approval. I may be contacted at six one seven five one three nine six nine four. Should you have any questions or concerns, please confirm receipt of this email and its inclusion in the public input portion of the meeting. I will look forward to your reply regards Frank Christopher, seventeen thirty Wellington Street, Dyton. Uh, this one, of course, it was some time ago, and this has been taken care of. Uh, from Charles Mello Conservation, the amended order of conditions for this project has expired. The applicant must file a notice of intent prior to any construction. I have attached a computer copy of the amended order of conditions issued to the applicant, Charlie. And, don't know if we read this last time. But I will read it. I'm gonna read it.
This is, uh, Dyton Planning Board, nine seven nine, Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass, March fifth, twenty nineteen. Uh, Wellington Trust, zero one, the street review of the subdivision plan. This office has completed a review of the three sheet plan set dated October twenty thirteen revised December fifth, twenty fourteen, for what appears to be a definitive subdivision. I use the word appears because the plans are labeled site plan with no planning board signature blocks. The plans have been reviewed for Dyton Board of Health regulations and Dyton stormwater regulations. This letter is based on these three plans only. Should a revised plan or additional information be submitted, another review will be need to be done. It is important to note that a separate stormwater permit from the Board of Health will be required for this project. We are offering the following comments. Septic, number one, there are three test holes shown on the plan view for both lots. Title five, parentheses fifteen point one zero two, parentheses, uh, two, requires a minimum of four holes per system for a total of eight holes. Additional holes are required. Number two, the Board of, the Dyton Board of Health regulations require septic systems to be maintained a minimum of one hundred feet from wetlands. This includes replicated wetlands under stormwater. Number three, are the indicated number of equalizer pipes adequate? Number three, are the indicated number of equalizer pipes adequate? Question mark, no analysis of the pipes was provided. Number four, there is only four inches to ten inches of cover proposed over the equalizer pipes. Please provide specific specifications on the pipes indicating this amount of cover is adequate. Number five, the equalizer culverts are posted with a length of twenty-six feet, but two driveways each ten feet wide and a breadth fifteen feet wide between the driveways would require a minimal length of thirty-five feet. Number six, the equalizer pipes are indicated to be set level, but the topographic information indicates drops of four inches to eight inches from one side of the driveway to the other, please clarify. Number seven, the side slopes of the driveways are indicated to be a two to one slope longer than seated. Rest is not stabilized, slopes steeper than three to one, slopes of two to one must be armored. Number eight, provisions must be provided for de-watering. To remove or replace under the driveway in a wetland will be into the water table. Number nine, provisions for a construction exit pad must be provided to prevent tracking of earth onto Wellington Street. Number ten, erosion control may not be adequate. Hay bales state one and a half to two inches into the ground will not adequately protect the wetland slash surface water of the Coles River. Number eleven, there are cuts of two to six feet at the locations of the wetland replications. This is a significant amount of earth removal. Water table elevations in these areas have not been verified, de-watering provisions may be required. Mr. Lanis, number twelve, the wetland delineation is over ten years old. The wetlands may need to be reevaluated as the line may have shifted in that length of time. Additional permits. Number thirteen, a stormwater permit is required from the Board of Health as a proposed disturbance exceeds thirty-five thousand square feet. Number fourteen, a notice of intent filing with, will be required with the Conservation Commission. Number fifteen, a four oh one water quality certification may be required given the amount of wetland disturbance. This project requires a significant amount of earthwork, wetland filling, Coles River, riverfront disturbance and erosion control measures. It is very important that the plan represents accurate measures to control sediment and water during and after construction. Thank you, Todd M. Pilling, P.E., Board of Health Agents. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm gonna read a, um, letter stated March fifteenth, twenty nineteen. And, um, this is to the Dyton Planning Board, Town of Dyton, nine seven seven, uh, Dyton, Mass. It's in regards to two sub- two lot subdivision peer review, off Long Street, Dyton, Massachusetts. Dear board members, this letter presents the results of GZA's review of the site plan review application submitted for the subject site. The application was reviewed with respect to the applicable sections of the Dyton, I'm sorry, with the Town of Dyton Planning Board's rules and regulations, Dyton designing bylaws, the general engineering practices. Materials reviewed by GZA include the following. Plans titled Site Plan for Long Street Trust in Dyton, Massachusetts, prepared for Long Street Trust of Dyton, Massachusetts, prepared by E. Otis Dyer, RPE, RPLS of Rehoboth, Massachusetts, dated October eighth, twenty thirteen, last revised December fifth, twenty fourteen. Defending the subdivision application prepared for Long Street Trust of Dyton, Massachusetts, prepared by E. Otis Dyer, RPE, RPLS of Rehoboth, Massachusetts, dated November fifteenth, twenty eighteen. Observation during a site visit on March sixth, twenty nineteen. The following presents GZA's review, uh, comments. General, section, uh, number one, section thirty-three, one six, Dyton Planning Board Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land, parentheses, R and R. The application should include information to confirm in compliance with Mass DEP's stormwater management policies unless waived by the planning board. Number two, section thirty-three, twenty, subdivision Dyton Rules and Regulations, the plans do not include the information required in the section. Additional plans should be included so that the proposed project is clearly presented. Number three, section thirty-three, thirty of the Dyton Rules and Regulations, the required accompanying statements and data should be submitted unless waived by the planning board. Number four, section thirty-three, forty, Dyton Rules and Regulations, a development impact should be submitted unless waived by the planning board. Number five, stopping and site distance calculations at the entrance should be provided. Number six, the available stopping and site distances at the entrance should be shown on the plans. Number seven, section four thousand, improvements, Dyton Rules and Regulations. The subdivision should include the required improvements in meeting design standards as applicable unless waived by the planning board. Number eight, the proposed utility services should be underground unless waived by the planning board. Number nine, the proposed cross culvert should be reinforced concrete or high-strength HDP pipe. Number ten, capacity of cross culverts to handle existing flows should be confirmed. Number eleven, the plan should indicate if the road will be private or public. Number twelve, details for the proposed water main and services should be submitted. Should any board members have any questions or information in regards to this letter, please feel free to contact me, seven eight one two seven eight four eight two one, or peter.williams@gza.com. And this is, uh, represented by GZA Biomechanics Incorporated, Peter J. Williams, P.E., Senior Project Manager.
Mr. Barrow, have we, uh, are we able to address some of these things?
Oh, I haven't addressed anything. Just, I was here, Kenny came by yesterday, I was, made me aware of the meeting, I'm going through this, but my first question is, on this March fifteenth letter, has anything been, this was started, I guess, as you all know, by Otis Dyer, company, and, uh, I think after they received this letter, because it deals with a lot of conservation issue, drainage issues, which they're, they're more like land surveyors, so I think they handled that end of it, but I guess they kind of like backed off the project. So then Kenny came to see me, uh, a few weeks back, showed me a copy of the plan that they had prepared and submitted to the board, I think it was a plan that was reviewed by Peter Williams, probably which developed these comments from, so, there's, I gotta do a lot of work to see where we are on this project before I can submit something to the board. So, I can see the concerns, conservation is always a big concern. Normally when we take on a job, we deal with conservation first as far as the wetlands go, things like that. And if this is an old flagline, I need to see first of all if conservation is gonna accept what was done or if they are gonna have to refound land rad to get the wetlands brought up speed. The, uh, questions about the perk testing and stuff, I can deal with Todd Pilling on that just to see what records they have in house to, uh, make sure it all agrees with what he's gonna wanna see up there. So, we got, there's like a lot of work ahead of us to bring this up to speed. The, I guess, they haven't responded, like when Otis Dyer was involved in this job, they never responded to this March letter, is that correct?
Right. Not a winged one. I think, uh, Kenny only got it at the last hearing, so it really wasn't any time.
And that, and then he gave it to me to look at, and then, so what I asked him for was to check with Otis Dyer to see if they could provide me with the CAD drawings of what was submitted, so I'm not reinventing things, so. And they just this week sent us some drawings, I had a review of what was sent to us. We're familiar with the site because in two thousand and five, we did a little work for Kenny Trujillo on the piece of property, so I'm aware of the site, so I really haven't been into it with regard to your comments, you know, so. I need some time before I look at this, see where it stands, and see what needs to be presented to the board.
But you're gonna go in a month?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
May I, will you be going before the con-con, before you really try to finalize the plan?
I think I need to at least find out about the flagline, because it, that would, and I can keep this board up to date, because I need to deal with the Board of Health and Conservation really first before we go further with the planning board. I just wanna see everything that was done on it to date, just to see what I need to work on to see if this is gonna happen. So, that's, so I, I think a month, if we could set up a meeting for a month, then that would be good, but definitely within the next couple of weeks, I'll contact you and let you know where we stand as far as time goes. So, I think that's it, but basically from what I saw, this is like a two lot subdivision, but it's being handled as a definitive subdivision plan, correct? Because they're coming in to the, the two separate driveways to the two proposed dwellings.
Okay, let's continue this for thirty days, until first meeting and, uh, June fifth.
June fifth. But, um, I would like you to keep in mind that on tonight's agenda, we also have discussion of the summer schedule, so just keep that in mind.
Okay.
July and August is the summer schedule that we set. So, right now, it would be either the fifth or the nineteenth. For the June, which would be this first and third, Wednesday, the ninth of the month.
It's a pleasure, man.
Do you think it'll need more than thirty days? Like, I think I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna need a good thirty days.
We'll give it six weeks.
So, you're, yeah, that'd be fine. If the meeting tends to be a nineteenth, that'd be fine.
Okay, I'll make the motion to continue this hearing until June nineteenth.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made second, I continue this.
Are we setting the time?
Excuse me?
Are we setting the time?
Well, we start at six, um, so I would say six fifteen, once we get it done.
Yeah, we can always take the first one off.
Yeah, six fifteen.
Six fifteen P.M.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Motion made second, I continue this hearing until June fifth, June nineteenth, six fifteen P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, thanks. Next, a hundred business, it would be four E, I don't think they're here yet. Um, we will discuss an act, chapter land release recommendation for fourteen twenty William Street and fifteen twenty-two William Street, uh, map eleven lot nine and map eleven lot eight dash, dash one. Uh, I believe that this is the land that the, uh, solar project will be going on.
That's correct.
That was sixty, sixty-one A land?
Mm-hmm. And the rest of the parcel would remain within sixty-one A, it's just physically the area.
Yeah, this went to the select, the graphics board of selectmen. Notice seven ten to convert chapter sixty-one A land located at fourteen twenty William Street, Dyton. Fossil ID zero seven six slash zero one one point zero dash zero 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 nine, et cetera. Map eleven lot nine, I think I'll go with that next time. Dear Mr. Chairman, pursuant to Mass. Journal Law, chapter sixty-one A, section fourteen, this letter serves as notice of our intent to convert approximately fourteen point eighty-nine acres of land known as a converted land currently taxed as agricultural land under Mass. Journal Law, chapter sixty-one A, for the purpose of leasing the converted land to a solar developer for the construction and operation of a ground-mounted solar facility. Attached here, too, is a copy of an ALTA survey showing the area of the proposed converted land marked as lease area. Receipt of this letter hereby triggers the town option to purchase the converted land. The recommendations, I don't think we have any need for this property, it's already, uh, been through a heck of a lot of work, so, you know, sure, so. Is there, is there a motion to, uh, decline our option or to enact our option?
Do you mind if I record this?
Oh, you.
I'm gonna record this if that's.
Oh, you wanna record it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just announce to everyone that.
Would you please, uh, give your name and announce that you're recording this audio tape, please?
Sure, my name is Edward Swizer, I'm record, audio and video recording.
That's done with the Massachusetts Journal laws.
That's, that's done with the only law from Ness.
Yeah, you mentioned it prior. Okay. All right, uh, pertaining to what I just read, uh, the release of chapter land, map eleven lot nine to be used as, uh, solar facility lease. Is there a motion to enact our option or not to?
I'll make the motion.
And I will second that motion.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, what we're doing is we're, we're providing a recommendation to the planning board on whether to have them release it or not. It would be the pla- it would be the Board of Selectmen who would be.
The other ones that would. What make a, what recommendation I did to, uh, accept the option of purchase or to not? Understand? In other words, we don't want the property.
We don't want it.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna decline our option? Uh, is there a motion to decline our option?
To purchase, right? Motion to decline.
Yeah, to purchase.
Oh, we, yeah, I'll make a motion to decline that option.
Okay, there is second.
I will second that option.
All right, motion is made and seconded to decline our option, uh, to purchase property located at fourteen twenty William Street, map eleven lot nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries. Sorry, Joe, I just got myself confused on that one.
I was born that way.
Yeah, the next one is, uh, notice of intent to convert chapter sixty-one A land located at fifteen twenty-two William Street, Dyton, map eleven lot eight dash one. Dear Mr. Chairman, pursuant to Mass. Journal Law, chapter sixty-one A, section fourteen, this letter serves as notice of our intent to convert approximately nine point seventy-three acres of land known as a converted land currently taxed as agricultural land under Mass. Journal Law, chapter sixty-one A, for the purpose of leasing the converted land to a solar developer for the construction and operation of a ground-mounted solar facility. Attached here, too, is a copy and of an ALTA survey showing the area of the proposed converted land marked as rear lease area. Receipt of this letter hereby triggers the town's option to purchase the converted land. Any discussion? Okay, would I entertain a motion then to either decline our option to purchase the property or to?
I'll make the motion to decline the option to purchase the land.
Okay.
And again, I will second.
Motion's made and seconded to decline the option of to purchase the land at fifteen twenty-two William Street, map eleven lot one, eight dash one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Got it all?
Yeah, all set. Thank you, guys, have a good night, appreciate it, good to see you all.
You, too.
Oh, that's incredible.
We think this is still wrong.
Listen, paperwork and I just go and agree with them.
All right.
I'll let them.
All right, let me see, here we go, listen, I got, I got him, he's.
Now, these numbers here, are they pre-swap or after swap?
Those numbers, so basically what you're looking at is you're looking at four parcels.
Correct.
Okay, this one, lot one twenty-three is for this area excluding parcel A.
Which is going over here.
Right, right. I believe, hold on, let me get this ready. Was that convincing enough?
We've never got the only ones that are a little, uh, perplexed.
Believe, I went over the, the, the figures on this three times and they were, they were fine. If you do the math, what are you saying, like?
Well, I'm saying, uh, whether they're pre-swap or after swap.
Yeah.
They should remain the same because one thousand's going here and a thousand's going there.
It's a simple swap of a thousand square feet per parcel, is it not? Yeah, all right, so, so these numbers, like lot, this lot re- references this minus the one thousand, same thing. Lot forty-eight is this area minus parcel eight. So then when you add, you add your one thousand to each, is that what we have here?
Okay, so if you're, so you're adding.
You're, you're adding your one thousand. So this plan, this plan is creating these parcels, it's creating four parcels. Yes, this is what we're trying. But they're gonna be, they're gonna be swapped.
So you're gonna have four, so you have two unbuildable parcels?
That's how you have to do a land swap.
Okay.
So you, believe me, it, 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 I know it's confusing. It'd be a lot simpler just to draw a line, but it, unfortunately, that's not the way you're supposed to do it. You create, you have two parcels, you cut two additional parcels out of it, give it a total of four. But then you just swap the two new parcels to the two old parcels and you have your two lots.
Okay, so parcel A.
Parcel A in the top.
It's gonna be?
Parcel A's going.
Going to the other side.
Going to the left, yeah. And parcel B, so obviously this is the original lot line.
Right, correct.
So you're looking at this, this is lot forty-eight, this is lot one twenty-three. So basically they're cutting this out of one twenty-three and giving it the forty-eight, cutting this out of forty-eight and giving it the one twenty-three to make everything even.
But if you did that, would not this property line go away?
That's correct, that's going away.
Why is it shown in the plan?
Because you have to show it as a parcel. This, this is a separate parcel, when you're doing land swap.
If it's a land swap, it has to be shown as a parcel?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not a land surveyor.
Technically.
Yeah, I do know.
Technically, this is in, I get it, you know. You ever worked in Taunton, deal with Kevin Scanlon on something like this, he's adamant this is the way you gotta do it. And technically, from a professional land surveyor's point of view, this is how you have to do it. You have to create these parcels and then swap them. You just can't take your line and shift it.
And then you do another A and R on that property and.
No, that's, that, that's why you note the purpose on this, the purpose of the plan is to combine these.
Okay, okay. And then if they, then if they exist for so long, they become by default the same property?
So then they'll. Yeah.
Do they become default with the same ownership?
They, they, they become, once this plan is put on record, they're automatically combined.
Okay. Okay, that's.
I mean, you could do.
I mean, it makes sense.
You can do an eighty-one X at that point, basically.
Yeah, that was, that was my question, is you're not gonna record them as four separate parcels and go back in again.
You gotta record the plan, you're recording the plan.
Yeah, the plan, yes, correct.
Yeah, so the plan, the recording of the plan creates parcel A and parcel B.
It's a lot forty-eight, ninety, forty-nine.
Well, it's not.
And then, but they just get swapped. And you don't have to go back, cause then otherwise you'd have to go back and record another plan. Technically, you could put another plan on record, you could do an eighty-one X plan, showing lines of existing ownership. Where you wouldn't need planning board endorsement at that point, because you're not changing the lot lines, you're just adding lots together. It's, it's kind of irrelevant, it's, it's never done that way.
Does this number have to match this number?
No. Uh.
It's a forty-eight.
Cause this is where we're confused.
Yeah. Does a forty-eight three eighty-five have to?
Right.
No, to create a new, a new parcel, the new parcel is gonna be forty-nine.
No, it's not, cause you're taking a thousand away from it.
But you're giving it to.
No, but this, this lot forty-eight shown here is already a subtracting parcel forty-eight. Because being.
When they, when they combine in the future, the numbers will go back to the, the originals.
The original numbers, so right now.
They're counted separate.
If, if I was showing this plan right here, this would be forty-nine, that would be forty-eight. But then when you cut a thousand out of each, you subtract a thousand, and then you're just gonna be adding it.
And it's just, and you add it into the order.
But not yet, that, that comes in the future when they combine.
In order to.
It just references.
In order to swap them, you have to create them first. So this plan is creating these thousands of square foot parcels.
I got it now.
And then, then you swap them and then it's.
Yeah.
It isn't all because of Kevin, right?
Alright, I'll make a motion.
Well, no, no, it's, it's, it's N P L S.
I'm looking at this.
I get it, so you've created.
Land, it springs into life as it stands.
I'll just.
Yeah, better bang.
I've done it, I've done it that way, and technically, you, you know, I don't think, like, the planning board maybe won't pick up on it and endorse it, but.
I need three of these.
Technically, if my rate would I say this, technically. I, I just wanna just.
I'm gonna make a motion, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I wanna make, I just wanna ask this question, I made the statement, that technically if you look at that, you're really creating three lots and not four. By, by looking at that plan, am I correct in saying that?
Isn't that what you were saying?
There's a number of ways to look at it.
I don't know any.
One way you could look at it, which is, I think what you just stated, is there's actually three lots on each side. So, there's parcel A, there's former lot forty-eight, and then there's a new one. And what's referenced as the, uh, this is in note three, to create a new forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-five square foot lot. Is yet the third lot, which is yet to spring into existence until this is recorded, uh, which isn't identified on the plan as an independent lot. So you could look at it that way, and then the numbers actually match up. You get from one to the two and then to a third. So that's another way to sort of make sense of it all.
Excellent.
With that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this A and R plan.
I'll second.
Was it made seconded or?
Aye. The chairman's already signed it.
So I need three of these plans signed, and then here's the Mylar, three, one for the assessor, one for the town clerk, and one for the planning board.
Now that we've taken care of that confusion, can I grab one too?
What's that?
Can I get a second?
You would want one, two, or I can, are people here? So, you have four, please.
Before you.
Do you have four?
Before you leave.
Uh, we only have two. Hang on, I only saw two.
Just wanted to confirm that.
It's three.
You knew why we were.
It, it, I, I, I thought I had the math correct, cause I did double check that, but I, I understand the confusion.
Hey, what do you guys take your plan out and sign it?
It would've been.
Sure, of course.
I probably should've labeled one twenty-three and forty-eight, gave them different lot numbers.
What?
What?
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Just so you could track.
You can just call it one twenty-three R and one forty-eight R.
Existing, and then have proposed swap, and then.
There's only two, somebody's gonna.
We have two more here.
Okay, we got two more coming.
Nice thing.
Sorry.
They're not, they're not the biggest of the. I know, I've seen one said, actually.
How many, how many sheets are there?
Seventy-five. And the extra big, these are lots.
Yeah.
That drives me crazy dealing with, this is about thirty by forty-nine.
Thirty-two by forty-eight.
Thirty-two by forty-eight.
I think something like that. We got Mylar.
I just gotta sign it.
Yep.
You've got, you keep your calendars, it's okay, it's okay, so I'll work, I'll have to get your turn, I'm thinking about how messy this is, you don't wanna disrupt the work, so, so, I can't sure that's.
You can go right to this continuance as well, so.
One more? Four? Jeez, who's got their last signature? Got something just like that.
I have no idea, but I've never seen my signature on the same exact one.
Did they teach us to stay in the lines of the.
I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, so I don't wanna.
Uh, just, I, I, I guess you're here for public input?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just, that's for you to record?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Oh, oh, I, I, yeah, I'll take it, okay.
Yep, and then, once you record that.
Actually, can, can you hold it here?
Sure.
Because the.
You're gonna pick it up?
The owner will come in and pick it up, it'd be easier for him to try to track me down and, unless we'll keep it here, he'll pick it up more far.
Gotcha.
I do have, um, something else I'd like to speak to the board about.
My plan, do you say?
Under public input.
Mrs. Gardner's still on here?
Take them all.
That was Gardner.
Oh, that, oh, that was Gardner?
That was Gardner.
Not very good. Not still the summer schedule?
Yeah. Alright.
How about the third Wednesday?
I got something I wanted to speak to the board about after.
Third Wednesday, yeah, definitely don't wanna do July third.
Why'd you take it off, Peter?
Yeah, exactly.
Um.
So the third Wednesday?
He still has his coat here, I'll hold it off.
Nineteen plans are going down.
Yeah.
So, what I did was I attached all the month's schedule.
Okay. So the nineteenth? Guys, June nineteenth, good for you guys?
No, so, cause that's the one with continued.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, that's gotta be June nineteenth, so we're gonna.
In August, I am out for two weeks.
So I guess, you'll be out for both of those?
I'm leaving somewhere in here.
July seventeenth?
I gotta check for the boss.
Seventeenth?
I'm gonna leave here.
July seventeenth?
Or leaving here, I don't know.
So it'll be August twenty-first?
Twenty-first?
August twenty-first?
August twenty-first?
It's gonna be out of town, I'm, I'll be out of the country.
I'm gonna be out of the country, I should, I should be here for all of them.
Yeah, me too.
I'm flying out, I'm, I'm probably gonna fly down.
And I just wanted to bring to your.
Fly back, that's the word.
I just wanna bring to your attention that September as well, um, falls, our first meeting falls on a holiday. So I know last year, we ended up not having this meeting because we didn't have a quorum, so I don't know if that's something you wanna deal with later on. Maybe we can deal with that in, what, August, to see who's gonna be here the week of that holiday.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wait to see.
Yeah.
It might be a tough week.
Right. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, yeah, did you mean it?
No, I just got it.
So right now, it's, so we're all.
June nineteenth, July seventeenth, and August twenty-first.
I don't think so.
Third Wednesday of each month.
Uh, so Mister Chairman, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion that our, uh, summer schedule reads as follows, um, June nineteenth, twenty nineteen. July seventeen, twenty nineteen, August twenty-first, twenty nineteen. The September meeting will be, um. We will poll the members before we decide on the September meeting date.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion made seconded, regarding our summer schedule, all favor?
Aye, aye.
Close. You can come in at the public input if you want.
You get lucky.
If you want, then I have.
Hi, John and Linda Leo from Three Month Street, we just have a couple of questions about two adjoining properties that we have. I've been speaking to Woody and he suggested to come down and talk to you guys, I get, um, I get an old plan, or just a plot plan, to show you exactly what they are.
It's the same thing?
Yeah, that's just a small building.
Okay.
This one, this one.
This is Tremont, right?
Tremont, yeah, it's three fifty and three sixty-six. Um, the, the main question I have.
You know what's this one has, I'll get my guy rings.
That's, uh, this great, great terrace.
Great terrace.
Great terrace, great terrace.
This is even the familiar one, but I have, I have.
Yeah, all thumbs to that comes out, that Tremont. But he's on the right side, on the north side of Tremont.
Okay.
Actually have the pictures of this, this thing.
This mid-soul property?
Yeah.
Okay, that's Ms., uh, Mr. Sylvia, Ms. Sylvia.
Okay, so I, my question is, is there a, is there a way to do a, um, um, a, a li, a property, a line square? In other words, I'd like to include the part of the garage that's back there and make that now part of that property. Uh, I know there's a, what, thirty-five thousand square feet minimum, I believe that is, so would it be possible to come, I think I got it drawn over here, might be easier to see.
First question is, where, where is the front of that?
There, one fifty-one on the frontage, so we're not changing any of the frontages.
That's true, right there.
This is, this is my house right here, and this is where I'd like to change the property line. Like, uh, somewhere in this area, between one fifty, a hundred and sixty-five feet, if it's possible to come back this way. And then to get the additional, I, I mean, go all the way back there if I had to. And then make all this one property and this amount property. Just basically swapping, making this part of this property.
As long as you leave thirty-five thousand square feet.
Okay, and, and this, how wide does this have to be here?
What is that back, what is that back building?
Yeah, that's a, that's a garage, yeah.
It's an existing garage.
Really what I wanna do is make the garage part of my property.
So what's the setback on the, uh?
Uh. Right now, right now, from here.
No, required, required.
Are you quiet?
I thought it was thirty the other day, they, uh, I almost told them it was fifteen, so.
Would it be considered an accessory structure or?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Man did his homework.
And then with the right question, the right question.
Fifteen feet, maximum building cover is twenty-five feet.
He's not changing that.
No.
Well, maybe in the first lot, maybe in the first lot, you can give a little that.
We didn't come prepared for that.
The, well, the, the remainder of this one.
The rear setback. Of the house, right?
Yeah, he's gotta watch the rear setback.
He's just gonna watch the setbacks.
Okay. So the setback, you mean from this house to here?
To the rear lot line.
To the rear lot line, the new lot line.
Okay, and is that listed here someplace?
Ten feet, is it?
It's not much.
So, but this, this land here, you're coming back.
He's got ten here.
All the way back with, uh, with, uh.
Well, to give, it's five back, is, I would have to to get to thirty-five thousand.
Fifty.
Make sure that's a.
You know what I mean, to.
Well, we, we have that pork chop, yeah, we got that pork chop, uh, rat tail, provision.
What, now, how old is this?
Yeah.
I picked that up last week.
Okay, from?
From the, the building department?
But in this case, if the, you'd have to do an A and R on this.
Yeah, definitely.
So is that similar to what he just did with the land swap, is that what we're discussing?
It's gonna be a land swap, yes.
Yeah, I think.
They're well versed on land swaps now, not gonna be an issue.
And maybe on the question whether it, you should be, talk to the building inspector.
Who owns this property?
Question of venue law.
I do, I own both.
Zoning violations.
Oh, do you? What, do you rent this?
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So you're just still gonna use the existing driveway that leads up to the back.
Less than until they submit something, it's a middle, yeah.
Uh, actually, this, this is old driveway, you know, I'll come find this, and I have my driveway, I have driveway, but it gets from back to back.
We don't design projects.
Okay.
From our office.
Okay.
My question, so if I could take this, just, the garage is here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, should put my glasses on.
Yeah, this is.
This is.
I saw that last week.
This is, that's.
That's like a.
So basically, what you wanna do is you wanna kinda go back here, some, somewhat like that?
Um, I mean, as far as I would have to go, get the.
Uh, I would, I, if I were you, I would just try to go back, even if you go on a slight angle or something.
That's a good one.
But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't start creating pork chops, because if you do, you.
You, you, you really need to get professional help. Oh, yeah.
Professional surveyor.
Well, that's convenient.
Just watch this, watch this.
Just cut this out of that piece, you cut the garage.
Just watch the setbacks.
Yeah, I'll take in the garage.
Panning it to the back piece. That's plenty of area.
Yeah.
Just take the thing out and move it.
No further intent, just no further intent, John, to develop any of this bad there, right?
No.
Okay.
I mean, the other thing is that either we take this house down and rebuild here, which I don't wanna really do, or I get rid of both of them. Be true.
It looks pretty simple, yeah, I don't mean.
It seems like, I, I just didn't know if, how wide this had to be.
Well, you got, it's just, uh.
Ten feet, twenty feet.
How much space do you have there now, what do you think?
Uh, included in all this, I mean, I mean, exactly.
No, just from the, the, the building over to the property line, from the gar.
Oh, it's about, about forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet, so leave fifteen for the garage, and take the rest of it.
And take the rest of it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an accessory structure.
Okay.
But you gotta, you gotta get a professional and talk to the building inspector.
Okay. I went there and.
Nothing we tell you here.
They, they don't talk to us.
They sent me to you guys.
Yeah.
We just gave a suggestion.
That's the setback, the, the side, the setback, no, it's.
Okay, yeah, before I start anyway, I figured I'd come talk to you guys and see what can, can't be done.
Yeah, he should stay away from Woody, he's got the floor.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a great night.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Is that your pencil?
Yeah.
Then you might want it.
Thank you.
Any more public input? Oh, yeah.
Oh, man.
Moving on.
Moving away. Um, no, I just, I talked, I spoke to John Garmarino today, I bought on development, and he's in the process of finalizing the subdivision, getting it ready to petition a tunnel for acceptance and stuff like that. He's gonna be putting the final payment down this summer. Um, I, I guess he had to wait to put the final payment down, I guess they just, after the paving season closed last year, they put in the last gas stuff.
What?
What's that?
Which subdivision is it?
What do we, which one we talked about?
Yeah, what are we talking about?
I should, uh, Noddy Pine, Noddy Pine Estates.
Oh, Jennifer Lane?
Okay.
Jennifer Lane. Um, so we're in the process of wrapping that all up, but there's one item that has come up. After that was approved by the planning board, he picked up, there was a lot on the south side, had an old, like, dilapidated house on it. He bought that, A and Red it, built the two houses. Um, on the original subdivision plan, we had, there was quite a bit of God rail we had shown on there. But because of that acquisition and that all being leveled off on that side, there's a lot of God rail that could be eliminated that doesn't meet the standard of requiring God rail. Um, so we're, we're in the process of doing, preparing a plan that shows all of the new grading, you know, adjacent, so, in the areas of where the God rail was originally proposed. Um, we'd probably bring it back in to the planning board and maybe, I don't know what the process would be, if it would be a subdivision modification, or if it's just something that the planning board would, would review and say, okay, it's not necessary, but almost like a field revision at this point, uh, however you wanna handle it. Once the plan's ready, I can certainly get it over to PETA, let him take a look at it and, you know, get his input.
We could give you an opinion over there, it should be a minor modification or just an infill, a, a young.
Yeah, it would, it would depend what's written on the, on the plan originally, maybe?
Yeah, once.
Um. I'd have to review the conditions, but in most cases, there's always minor changes that come up, I mean, just eliminating some God rail is pretty minor if the final grading doesn't warrant it.
Right. Yeah, 'cause it hadn't been accepted anyways, so.
Right, right.
So it would be a modification.
We wanna get this cleaned up, obviously, before he petitions it for acceptance and.
Yeah.
Um, so that's it, like I said, I'm gonna, I should have a plan ready within a week or so.
That's fine.
I can, you know, email, and then whatever the process is, if it's a formal modification, we'll have to, I guess, submit an application for that, or if it's just a minor modification, you know, let me know how you wanna handle it, and we'll just go from there. Or we wanna, you know, be proactive and get this squared away, we don't wanna get held up, you know, in the summer, you know, not have an answer, then next thing you know, it's too late, you know, to petition, so.
Yeah, there's something else going on with Jennifer Lane, but I can't think of what it is now.
Well, I know, um, we just, I did an O D A, the, one of the, uh, property owners that was putting a pool in back there, and I came in, it wasn't necessarily for that, but it was, um, Mark Barrows, was, was the name?
Yeah.
He was asking about the status of the road.
Just what the status was.
Were the, so, you know, just to get an update on that.
Maybe that's what it was, 'cause some of the, there's, uh, pond pools here and there where.
Drainage.
Not draining properly, probably what it was.
That was the budding house at the entrance? We had the issue with the budding house at the entrance.
Correct, I remember that.
That's, that's the only issue I'm aware of, that one there.
Yeah. Yeah. No, there is one more, which is.
There is something going on there.
The downspouts are draining to most of those lots on the south side, especially towards the end, the drainage from the downspouts is coming down to the sidewalk. And on the winter time, it's, it creates problems, and I, I actually got a few people that came up to me. Yeah, you're on a planning board, what are you gonna do about this? Ooh, I referred it to Jim. Jim says that that has nothing to do with him. Uh, it has to do with us. And we should not approve it until those are thinking that, that that situation is addressed.
How does that have to do with the planning board?
Because it's a safety issue. The water is draining onto the sidewalk, and then it freezes.
Has more to do with the stormwater committee, I think.
Well, maybe it does, I don't know.
We've been working on identifying the houses that drain to the street.
But there's three.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, but typically, I mean, I, I would say that'd be typical in any subdivision where the front of the house is the downspouts. You know, if everything's graded to the street, you want it to run off to get to the street, go into the catch basin, and be treated that way.
If, if it's coming down naturally, but in this case here, it's down spot, the, the, the pipes.
Yeah.
They ran pipes to about, what did they say?
Oh, okay, so it's not going over the lawn area?
That's correct.
No, I don't.
So it's, they're piping it right out to the, oh, I got you.
Yeah, so it was natural drainage.
So that, that, I would say it's a.
That's a building issue, I think.
It's a building issue, because you could approve the subdivision, these people are gonna put the, you know, the pipe, you know, extensions back on.
I can't see, I still own, most of that's a plan, I think it's building, I mean, that, that wasn't, 'cause you get outside the right away.
I agree, I agree.
I, I'm just, I'm just going, I, I brought, I, 'cause I, I don't wanna get involved in that.
Now, we've been discussing these issues at the stormwater committee.
Yeah.
But.
And we are addressing those.
But that's probably below, it's the same as the stormwater committee, you know?
Put it this way, I mean, if it was.
Elusive, illicit discharges.
We actually had.
It's not illicit discharge, it's how it's being done.
We actually had pictures of one of the sidewalks being completely covered with ice.
Yeah, 'cause he's, that's supposed to go all the way in, from, from the house.
Yeah, but that's.
So it's not, you don't have a point, so it's discharge going right out the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the discharge on, especially two lots, I believe.
Well, I mean, I would, I, I think that's a building issue where they gotta approach the homeowner, it's, I guarantee you, that's not shown on any plan, that was, you know, that's something they just put in.
Yeah, but that, I, 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 I think, uh, John or his excavation guy was the one that put it there.
It's simple enough, you just abandon it and put a six-foot pipe out from the foundation out to downspout.
Yeah.
It's like having your sump pump goes all the way out to the street and then.
And one, one of them is that way.
And then freezing the street in the winter.
One is that way.
Evan is dealing with an issue like that, it's funny, it's a driveway, there was some pump going right out to somebody's driveway, which is reason that that's a problem.
Yeah, let's, let's finish this video.
I froze my street once.
Any correspondence?
So I'll get you half in as soon as it's ready. So, did you have something?
Yeah, I, um, I, I, I believe my wife sent you a check.
Okay.
Well, this is private.
So you don't wanna do that.
You're recording, you know, your wife is gonna hear you.
I'm the one looking for approvals, I should, it should be going in though.
I'll, uh.
Can we have a motion, can we have a motion, do it, Jim?
Can we have a motion, do it, Jim?
No.
You do not.
Do not.
Oh, we have some bills to pay.
We have correspondence.
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
Oh, I have a piece of correspondence, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is from the City of Totten, this is a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the municipal council will give a hearing at the temporary city hall in the Chester Armton Municipal Council chambers, city hall one forty-one Oak Street, Totten, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, at seven P M. On a petition of, City of Totten, temporary city hall, one forty-one Oak Street, Totten, Mass, on a petition of City, of Totten, for proposed changes to the City of Totten zoning ordinance dated February nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Bay Street rezoned. The proposal is to rezone assessors parcel fourteen dash sixteen, two thousand seven Bay Street from office district to business district, and to rezone the suburban residential zone portion of the assessors parcel fourteen dash ten, twenty seven, twenty seventy Bay Street to a business district. Plan and all property descriptions are on file in the city clerk's office for public viewing, attested by Rosemary Blackwell, City Clerk, City of Totten.
I have several, several correspondents here, uh, first one, Totten Planning Board, twelve ninety-eight Cohannon Street, one forty-one Oak Street, Totten, Mass, notice of public hearing, notice of public meeting, I apologize. The Totten Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Thursday, May second, twenty nineteen, at five thirty P M in the Chester Armton Municipal Chamber, uh, forty-one Oak Street, Maxim School, Totten, Massachusetts, for a site plan review for property at three eleven Somerset Avenue for a mixed use of the existing building as an office and one residential apartment submitted by Antonio De Rosa, owned by our only Catholic bishop, Paul River. All interested parties are invited to attend to present issues and concerns relative to this proposal. The plan and development impact statement, if applicable, are available for public viewing in the planning board office, twelve ninety-eight Cohannon Street, during normal working hours, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight A M to four P M, Tuesday, eight A M to seven P M, and Friday, eight A M to noon. Please send any, please send any correspondence regarding this proposal to the planning board office no later than April twenty-third, twenty nineteen. Um, individuals with disabilities who require assistance or special arrangements to participate at the hearing, please contact Kevin Scanlon at five zero eight eight two one one oh five one, or by T V D at five oh eight eight two one one oh two four. We request you provide a ten-day notice that the proper arrangements may be made, Totten Planning Board, Robert P. Campbell, Chairman.
City of Totten Public Hearing, notice is hereby given that the municipal council will give a hearing at the temporary city hall in the Chester Armton Municipal Council chambers, city hall one forty-one Oak Street, Totten, Mass, on Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, at seven P M. On a petition of City of Totten, temporary city hall, one forty-one Oak Street, Totten, on a petition of City of Totten, for proposed changes to the City of Totten zoning ordinance dated February nineteenth, twenty nineteen, county street rezone proposal. Proposal is to rezone the existing office district to highway business district and to expand the district to encompass several existing businesses that are located in the urban residential district. The parcels are located between ninety-five Summer Street to the west, and one twenty-five County Street to the east, and eleven Angle Street to the south. Falling parcels shall be rezoned from office districts to highway business district, parcels sixty-six dash two fourteen, sixty-seven dash one one eight, sixty-seven dash one one seven, sixty-seven dash one one six, seventy-nine dash one, and the portion of sixty-six dash two eleven located to the south of County Street. The falling parcels shall be rezoned from urban residential district to highway business district, sixty-seven dash eleven, sixty-six dash two one seven, eight dash one three two, seven eight dash one two three, seven eight dash one three one, sixty-six dash two one seven, sixty-six dash two one eight, sixty-six dash two zero one through six six dash two ten, six six dash one eight, six six dash two three oh. Plan and all property descriptions are on file in the city clerk's office for public viewing, attached, our own Blackwell City Clerk.
Chairman, if I may, this is from the Totten Planning Board, twelve ninety-eight Cohannon Street, one forty-one Oak Street, mailing address, Totten, Massachusetts, zero two seven eight oh. This hearing is for tomorrow evening, Thursday, the Totten Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Thursday, May second, twenty nineteen, at five thirty P M in the Chester Armton Municipal Council chambers, one forty-one Oak Street, Maxim School, Totten. For a modification of a site plan review for property at three seven five dash three seven seven Bay Street for the removal of condition number eleven, which requires rebuilding the sidewalk along the frontage of the project and including the wheelchair ramps and the Bay Street crosswalk slash Alger Avenue intersection and Bradley Avenue slash Alger Avenue intersection. In lieu of removing the above condition, they are proposing to repair and improve the drainage on Bradley Avenue connecting with Bay Street, submitted by Aspen Properties Development LLC, Christopher Coos. All interested parties invited to attend to present issues and concerns relative to the proposal. The plan and development impact statement, in parentheses, if applicable, are available for public viewing in the planning board office, twelve ninety-eight Cohannon Street, during normal working hours, Monday through Wednesday, and Thursday, eight A M to four P M, Tuesday, eight A M to seven P M, and Friday, eight A M to noon. Please send any correspondence regarding the proposal to the planning board office no later than April eighth, twenty nineteen. Individuals with disabilities who require assistance or special arrangements to participate at the hearing, please contact Kevin Scanlon at five oh eight eight two one ten fifty one, or by T V D at five oh eight eight two one ten twenty four.
I believe it's quiet, it's.
We request you provide a ten-day notice so that the proper arrangements may be made, Planning Board Chairman, Robert P. Campbell, Chairman. City of Totten Zoning Board of Appeals, City of Totten, Massachusetts, Zoning Board of Appeals, notice of decision one on a variance in or special permit. Advocate Commonwealth Alternative Care Incorporated, date April seventeen, twenty nineteen, case number three four nine five, owner R and L, R and R Realty Trust, addresses sixteen Mozome Boulevard. For a variance from section four forty, attachment number three of the zoning board, I'm sorry, of the zoning allowance to allow eight-foot channel leak fence topped with three standards, three strands of barbed wire, and eight-foot-high electronically gate with a zero-foot sideline setback instead of thirty-five feet at sixteen Mozome Boulevard, Totten, Mass. At a public hearing on April eleventh, twenty nineteen, the Z B A granted the variance from section four forty, attachment number three of the zoning ordinance. This decision of the board, together with detailed record of its proceedings stating the reasons for this decision, shall be filed in the office of the city clerk, and decision filed with the city clerk on April sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Important, any appeal from the decision of the appeals board can be made only to the court and must be pursuant to section seventeen, chapter forty A of the general laws, as amended, and must be filed within twenty days after the date of the filing of the decision with the city clerk. Uh, Dennis Ackman, Zoning Board of Appeals, Chairman.
Just a minute, please. Um, after reviewing these, it appears that most of them have nothing to do with Town of Dayton.
No, they do.
Um, so for the, I mean, they will be posted, uh, so if there's no objection, I think we should forego the reading, uh, of each of these.
Chairman, I'll motion that we, uh, forego the reading of the letters and post them outside on a bulletin board outside of the planning board office.
Do you second that?
I will second.
Motion made and seconded, all favor?
Aye.
opposed? Um, I think what I'm gonna do going forward is review them prior to each Wednesday night, and if it appears any one of them have a close proximity to the Town of Dayton or related to Town of Dayton, then we'll, we'll read those, so.
I can see why they, you, they would do that.
Yeah, well, it's required by law.
Oh, really?
It's act, it's required by law for the surrounding towns to notify activity, and then we just post them on our meeting board, which I have it posted.
I could see it if it was within a certain distance of the Town of Dayton, but Mozome Boulevard, Bay Street is just about at the far end of town.
Yeah, so I'm gonna review them, and I'm gonna see if it, uh, if it's in a, in a budding property line.
Yes.
Then I think we should read them, or if it affects the Town of Dayton, so, because any bidders who live in Dayton in close proximity will get a notice anyway.
Correct.
So. That's why nobody ever read them. Well, I just felt they pay like five dollars to mail it out certified.
Yeah.
So maybe they should have been read, no?
So maybe they should have been read, I, I don't know, but if it pertains to Dayton, we will read it. So Mass D O T, it's preparing their next five-year capital plan. Uh, they will have a public meeting held in Fall River, Thursday, May twenty-third, six thirty P M, Fall River Library Large Meeting Room, one oh four North Main Street. If you're interested in Mass D O T Capital Investment Plan, then you wanna go. I think that was it, huh?
That's it? Maybe you could go on a minute.
Oh, Woody might like this one. No, this is Pro Home Twenty-Ninth Annual Meeting, uh, from Bridgewater Saviance, Wednesday, May eighth, twenty nineteen, Stoneforge Tavern and Public House. Twenty nineteen annual meeting schedule, eleven thirty A M, registration and networking, twelve noon luncheon.
One of my favorites.
Uh, twelve thirty awards, twelve forty-five speaker, one thirty adjournment, so I don't really wanna.
Did I tell Woody, see if he wants to go?
And what was the cost, enough fifty dollars per person? Four hundred dollars per.
Probably not table?
No, it's fifty dollars per individual.
Oh, yeah, oh, jeez.
Tom is paying for that?